Good evening, everyone. We'd like to reconvene the Thursday, February ninth, meeting of the Lake Forest State of Education. Would join me for pledge allegiance to all of our beloved citizens.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to everyone who's joined here in person, as well as those that have joined online. Just a reminder that we are streaming tonight's meeting across the web. And that recording and minutes will both be published once approved. We'll start tonight with roll call of board members. Dr. Wyatt, Ms. McCoskin, Mrs. Starkey, and President Earl Dempsey serving his chair as president as well. We have four board members present and one who's in the middle of having a baby. Not one of the four, that's the one that's asking for clarification. On the two point four approval of agenda, let's start.
Make a motion, we approve the agenda as presented. Second.
Motion on the floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, we move to vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries four to zero.
Section two point five, make a motion, we approve the minutes from the January twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three meeting. Second.
On motion on the floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, move to a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries four to zero. Two point six recognition presentations. We do have one tonight. I will turn it over to Dr. Lucas.
Good evening, everybody. I believe we have Mrs. Mattelavage here with some representatives from Lake Forest High School. Put them in the room.
We can introduce you guys.
Okay.
Right there. Come on in. Tell us all about the students joining me.
Hello, I am Mrs. Laws and we have, we have a couple of different students here. The first two, we have Emily and Phoebe. They got into for the first time ever at Lake Forest into all Easter chorus. So they're gonna go sing with kids all up and down the East Coast. And they're gonna do that in April in Rochester, New York. So they're gonna fly or drive up there and sing with kids from all over the East Coast, which is pretty, pretty cool. And then the other three behind, there is a fourth, but she's not with us tonight. We have, we have Emma Brody and Haley, and then Laura is also there, but these are the students that made all state. So they're gonna get them to sing with students all over schools of Delaware. They all had to audition in order to get in. So yeah, so we're really proud of them. It's a big honor. And I think it's the most we've ever had. So it's pretty cool as well. So yeah.
Pretty good. Congratulations.
Yes, they don't have anything to sing tonight because they're all in different groups and some were in the first half of the year and now some I have this year. But you can come see legally bond in new school and you'll get to hear them all sing there.
And if there's anyone else that wanted. Nice work, folks. All right, we're on to two point seven citizens' participation opportunity for members of the public to address the board. We had asked for anyone who desired to do so, please sign up as you enter the room and present that to the superintendent's office. We do have a few this evening. So we'll start and we'll start before I call them out. We do ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. And Ms. Piccolo will be timing. You will start this evening with Ms. Michelle Thompson from Harrington. Welcome to Thompson. You may stand over there actually right here. Yeah.
Right in the middle of all this. So thank you for allowing me to speak today. I came to speak as a part of the referendum. My name is Michelle Thompson. My two children, Everly and Kennedy, go to North and Central. We have been blessed to have amazing teachers, support professionals, and administrators with both of our children. And I have attended all the meetings with regards to the referendum and feel as if it is necessary. Number one, we've been able to recruit and retain quality educators for our community. One way to do this is through pay increases. We need, we need to become more competitive in the job market. Right now, we're, as we know, we're dead last. This is not going to lend itself to attracting highly qualified candidates. In addition, it will not retain the already highly qualified educators that we have. And to be honest, they deserve so much more than even this referendum will do. Number two, our schools above all else need to be safe. And frankly, right now, as much as we don't want to admit it, they are not as safe as they could be. To me, this is a wants versus needs debate. I understand the want for the school board to be fiscally responsible. I understand that we do not want to pay more taxes, but this is an indisputable need. Unfortunately, that comes at a cost. We cannot rely on our state to fund our constables. Our community has spoken, they have voiced that they would support a referendum that would fully fund constables for every school. This would roughly come at the cost of one pizza per month for the adverse taxpayer. I'm positive that most people would forego that pizza to ensure the safety of their children. Let's send a message to our community that we value our educators and that our student and staff are top safety as our top priority by voting to move forward with the referendum.
Ms. Thompson, thank you very much. So thank you for being part of the process to this point, right? With your time and attendance. And also, you know, your visible support here is exactly what the district would need if we moved tonight to towards a referendum that will need in that campaign for such. So thank you again. I think that's an A. So Ben Black, Mr. Ben Black from the high school. Welcome, Mr. Black.
All right. So good evening, members of the board. For those watching the stream, I'm Ben Black, resident of the Lake Forest Education Association. LPA represents the teachers, paraprofessionals, custodial and maintenance workers, the child nutrition workers, secretaries and tech support engineers of the Lake Forest School District. I am in my sixteenth year here as a teacher all at the high school. When I was hired in two thousand and seven by Dr. Wyatt, in fact, I was in a lucky position personally. My student loan payment for my education at UD, so in state, were very expensive. My parents were kind enough to let me live with them until I was able to get my own place. I didn't live in the district and I didn't graduate from the district, but I was taken in warmly and welcomed into the community. And I quickly decided I didn't want to leave, even when other nearby districts had openings. I graduated high school a writer, but I've been a Spartan for much longer than that. Unfortunately, times have changed since then. College costs, even in-state, have skyrocketed. The cost of housing has skyrocketed. Groceries, fuel, the price of everything has skyrocketed. We've now reached a point where one of the first questions to come from a candidate anywhere in the state, not just here, is what is the salary? Then this isn't a desire to be greedy. Everyone knows that nobody gets an education for the money. But a simple needs assessment, the employees of the district want to earn enough to live comfortably. And they will shop around for a district that will pay even a little bit more than another. We've seen candidates turn down positions once they've seen the pay scale. This has left us with open positions and other employees have to work extra to make up for the vacancy. And this leads to burnout and then more staff leaves for other districts or other industries. The referendum you're considering tonight will cover four main issues: security in the constables, transportation costs, technology costs, and staff recruitment and retention. I don't wish to take away from the importance of any of these. They're all crucial to a successful educational program. But time and time again, we've learned that the most successful students are the ones who have the most effective teachers. And this district cannot continue to hire and in fact will lose its most effective staff without an investment in those staff. I strongly implore the board to approve the referendum vote and make that investment in the staff.
Thank you, Mr. Black. And next, we have Anita Bullshit. Welcome, Miss Bullshit.
Good evening. Sorry. No, not going backwards. So good evening. I want to take a few minutes and express my thoughts for the members of the board and the community regarding the upcoming referendum, possibly. As a current employee of the district, I've been here for over twenty years. I feel it's important to acknowledge the work the district has accomplished in hiring employees based on the needs of the communities and the students. However, as years have progressed, the needs of the students care, welfare, and safety have greatly changed. There are academics as well as our mental health. These have expanded, which has caused the district to create additional positions such as constables, behaviorists, family crisis therapists, special ed teachers, et cetera. Delaware is such a small state, the ability to access any surrounding district is not out of the question. Therefore, as a district, we need to be able to compete with those districts to recruit and retain our staff. I've seen for myself, I've sitting on some of those most intricate interview committees. The interview steps a dog, and then they get told how much they're gonna pay, and they decline the job because they can't afford to lose the money. I know, for instance, somebody was going to come here from North, and they lost six thousand dollars to come in here. That's okay. Um, so as many of the current employees, including myself, we told two or three jobs to maintain the needs of our own family. And as employee of the district, we're not asking to be the highest paid in the state, but not being the lowest paid district. Makes it very difficult to compete when you're surrounded by school districts that are literally five or ten minutes down the road. So as you contemplate the upcoming referendum, please understand that we want to meet the needs of our students in our district. By voting yes, we can continue to recruit and retain superior staff and have your children be in a position to help our society for years.
Thank you, Miss Bullshit. Anita and Ben, thank you again for being here tonight. I want to sort of thing that you do with LPA and our staff. It's much appreciated. Okay, that is all I had this evening. So we will close out citizens' participation. We will open it again during our next, at the beginning of our next meeting. For that, we'll move on to three point one. We'll move on to section three reports, three point one, on the intro dance, Mr. Kirkell. Welcome, Mr. Kirkell.
Good evening. This evening, I pushed off the monthly board financial report to the next meeting because I wanted to cover the, the local funds audit, some of the, the results of that local funds audit. Just for your knowledge, I looked up on the officer of the auditor's website, and the last time that a local funds audit was done across any school district across the state was twenty fourteen. So you can see it's been quite a long time since it's, even though it is in code that they're supposed to do that every year. So, so I will say I was very impressed with the overall amount of detail that they went into. The depth of the study. So tonight, hopefully, we get a chance to demonstrate that, get that fiscal transparency, especially coming up on a referendum. To show that we are indeed doing things the way we're supposed to be doing them and being fiscally accountable in the Lake Forest School District. So with this audit, this was the, they tried to set up some boundaries. And, and the other thing I'll point out is we're kind of putting the cart before the horse here because this is all based on the draft report from the audit finding or the audit report. But we have had our exit briefing. So it's just a matter of waiting to get the final report. But I figured, once we get that final report, I can pass that on to the board as well. But in terms of the, the audit itself, this was the four objectives of the audit that was expressed by the auditor's office. First, to address the expenditure of local funds where they in accordance with the Delaware Code, the administrative code, the budget, the state budget and accounting manual, our own district policies, and were they supporting the district budget as we've laid out. The second objective they were looking at was the receipt of our local funds, where they operated in accordance with the requirements, which basically means, you know, did we collect them properly from Kent County and did we disperse them into the proper appropriations and so forth? As laid out per Delaware Code. And then number three, the third objective is the real estate taxes where they approved and calculated in accordance with the requirements. Again, accordance with Delaware Code, where they calculated correctly and then approved through the, the school board like we do every year. And then the last objective was the tuition taxes, that they calculated and spent in accordance with the requirements, same thing in accordance with Delaware Code. So moving on with the audit results, the first objective, one result. They stated that the key internal controls over expenditures of funds were in accordance with requirements. They did provide two exceptions, though. They did have two findings. And they were both findings that actually I kind of pushed back against the, the vendor that was selected that provided these two findings. The first one was the MCI purchasing card disbursement that was not approved by DOE Capital Projects. And one of the things that they did point out here was that in the budget and accounting manual, in one of the chapters, it does state that capital improvements require DOE Capital Projects Management to approve all minor capital improvement purchases, purchase orders, change orders, and direct claim vouchers. And so that's what they're referring to. But then they did say right after that, the DOE's approval is an ad hoc approval that is manually inserted into the FSF approval workflow by the district. So what I'm trying to say is, is it's a manual process. So you have to, it's not automatically set into the, the state accounting system that these purchases will go through the DOE Capital Projects team. And so what usually happens is, is we have any kind of minor capital improvement purchase, and whether it's a purchase order or a direct payment voucher or anything, we always, those are always put in by the person who generates those payment vouchers, the, the financial secretary who generates those payment vouchers. She inserts those into the system. She inserts that DOE Capital Project Management projects team. And so, and then she uploads any required documentation for that whole process. So the problem is, is this particular instance, we used a, the P card, the government P card, the purchasing card, and it bypasses that whole process. And so the first opportunity we have to insert DOE into that workflow is not until it gets all the way up to me for final approval before it goes to the division or county. So for one, I wasn't even aware that the system could let me add in that. And I checked with a couple of other school districts and a lot of other school districts, we're not even aware that you could do that in terms of the purchasing card approvals and inserting DOE into that workflow. So we have since corrected that and it's, it adds a tremendous amount to our workflow because we've added like several steps just to satisfy this process. But we do make occasional minor capital improvement purchases with the government P card. We try not to, but sometimes you have to. There's a capacitor that, you know, it's cheaper to buy and you need it immediately. And the only thing they take is a government P card. And so, you know, we don't try to use the government P card all the time, but there are situations where it's required. So. But again, we've addressed that issue. And then the second one that they brought up was the no approved purchase order for two of the dispersments over two thousand dollars, which exceeded the threshold in our own school board policy DJ, which is purchasing. So the circumstances around this particular event was at the beginning of that particular fiscal year, normally the division of accounting threshold for purchase orders is five thousand dollars. Our district board policy DJ had a threshold, so it was a more restrictive policy. So at the beginning of that particular fiscal year, the division of accounting had increased their threshold from five to ten thousand. So in that process, I went ahead and communicated to all the school secretaries and the financial secretaries that we can go ahead and bump ours from two thousand up to five thousand. And so in that process, though, I started the process to update board policy DJ, but it wasn't until several months later that it got through the process and first reading, second reading, and actually getting through the board. And since then, as I was doing that, I also changed the language so it was more flexible. So as you read district policy DJ now. Leave that on the copy here. Yeah, so the DJ purchasing policy now, because it was revised in the last year. An approved purchase order is required for purchases exceeding the threshold set by the state division of accounting, which we always know. But then the second sentence is the chief financial officer may recommend a more restrictive threshold in the interest of fiscal oversight. So that's where we get rid of the whole district level threshold, and it's just set by me. And it's, it gives us a lot more flexibility, the way that the current policy was revised to be written. So that was some of the background behind those two findings, but otherwise they had, they had tested over forty different non-payroll and forty different payroll expenditures to include time sheets, bi-weekly payments, and everything was, was, was perfectly as it was supposed to be. Then moving on to objective two.
Sure. Is there, is there a threshold for the MCI funding for any purchase?
No, it's any purchase.
Any purchase.
Yeah, so it could be a five dollar part, and it has to go to the DOE Capital Projects team. If it's being paid for out of those funds. Thank you. The second objective, results receipts of local funds were in accordance with requirements. They stated that the county tax revenues were correctly received and transferred to the relevant appropriations. And that one wasn't really too, I mean, that was a pretty straightforward objective. And results. And then objective three, the real estate taxes were correctly approved and calculated. And they, they were very thorough. They went through all of our match taxes to look back at what's authorized and what's approved, what we were allowed to collect in terms of the different match taxes, and they looked at what we collected for those and where they deposited in the correct appropriations that were commensurate with those, what those match taxes were collecting. So everything was correctly approved and calculated. In addition to setting those match tax, tax rates. So and then objective four, results tuition taxes were correctly calculated and expended. Also, they looked at, you know, what our annual tuition expenses were. They took a sample of our tuition expenses where they authorized tuition expenses per Delaware Code, and everything was correctly calculated and expended. And so then the last slide that I just wanted to present was, if we look at the two of the taxes, the debt service tax and the tuition tax, because some of this stuff, they did quite a bit of extensive research in terms of, I'll read off some of the items in terms of attorney general opinions when we talk about the debt service tax. And so one thing to know about the debt service taxes in Delaware Code and Title fourteen, it does state that districts are authorized to levy a debt service tax sufficient to cover the local share of the annual principal and interest payments plus ten percent for expected delinquencies. So in an example, I could give you, if we know our principal and interest payments for debt service next year are going to be four hundred thousand dollars, then we could collect four hundred and forty thousand dollars to account for expected delinquencies. So one of the things that they brought up was one of the attorney general opinions that they brought up from nineteen eighty-nine was that a sufficient reserve is at least four months of the following fiscal year's debt service payments. And so one of the things they talked about is a district is required to maintain that debt service minimum amount. Some people push back against that. Some of the business managers push back and say, well, I don't see why we have to maintain a minimum. If we want to charge a lower tax, you know, we should be authorized to do that. And then the other portion of that, the hundred and ten percent is a different attorney general opinion that stated that the reserve is considered excessive when it's greater than a hundred and ten percent of the total debt expenditures for the following year as they levy that debt service tax. So they kind of created a range basically of what we can carry in terms of a, a district reserve for the purposes of debt service. And so that range being four months of the following years, debt service payments up to a hundred and ten percent. And so we, the observation was, we were at about the six-month point in terms of our reserve for debt service payments. And then the second one was the tuition tax, the requirement that the district reserve sufficient to cover expenses through the first three months of the fiscal year. And I've always tried to maintain that three to six-month range. They said the reserves were sufficient to cover six months of the expected tuition costs consistent with other districts. And actually, they were covering fiscal year twenty twenty-one. And that happened to be at the end of the year where we had that very low tuition payments that year. And then we correspondingly lowered the tuition tax. So we had, that was one of the reasons that we had a six-month reserve was because we didn't have the expenses that year that we typically do. So those were just a couple of the items that I wanted to bring to light out of the, the audit itself. I was very pleased with the way that the district bared and I was actually impressed with the, the depth and the magnitude of the audit itself. They were pretty thorough with everything. So. Any questions with the, the audit itself?
Questions for Mr. Kelvin. So you asked one question I might have think throughout, and my question is going to be, the AOA actually do this themselves, or did they contract it out? But you referenced a contract.
And that was the reason for the fifteen thousand dollar expense. It was just the vendor itself, and then we had to pay another couple thousand dollars to the auditor's office for administration.
Which was going to be my next question is, have we gotten the bill for this? And what, how much was it?
We did, yeah. It came in a little over fifteen thousand dollars just for the, the vendor itself.
Great, great. No other questions? All right. Thank you, Kirk.
Okay, on the three point two superintendent report, Dr. Lucas. Good evening, Spark family. Thank you. I just want to congratulate those morning students. I know I'm looking forward to the spring musical, and I encourage everyone to get there and see it. I just want to take a moment to thank everyone again who participated in the school finance committee and appreciate that, the work that we all did. A lot of you that are right here in this room, and thank you very much for that. Still time to nominate one of our fine teachers for teacher of the year. The link to the nomination form can be found on the main page of our website. Our teachers will get to see those nominations. So write them, write them a thank you and nominate them for teacher of the year. The nomination period remains open about another week or so until February seventeenth, so a week from tomorrow, to nominate one of our great teachers. I'm always like to give out a few calendar reminders. There's no school for students this Monday, February thirteenth, for parent-teacher conferences. And then again, on February twentieth, we will be closed for president's day. Don't forget February is Black History Month. We've been doing events at all of our schools in honor of Black history and our district-wide celebration, which is being sponsored by the Lake Forest High School Black Student Union. It's Friday evening, February twenty-fourth at Lake Forest High School. I'm sending home a flyer soon, which will tell, will all, tell you all about the event, which includes a dinner this year in the cafeteria. Courage you keep an eye on district calendar as always to stay up on our activities and events. And I thank you, Neil, the floor back to President Dempsey for any questions or discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Lucas. Questions or discussion for Dr. Lucas or superintendent report? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next item, stay with me, strategic plan update, three point three.
Thank you very much again. When we implemented our strategic plan last year, it required that we report to semi-annually and let you know, give you an update how things are going. So that is the purpose of this presentation is to just give a semi-annual report and how things are going in the district with regards to the strategic plan. Again, this is a reminder, our vision for the districts of the model of excellence in education, and our emphasis this year has really been on providing high-quality instruction, improving the quality of classroom instruction in order to increase student learning. I did want to just highlight some of the things that we've done in the different priority areas. As a reminder, priority of one, area one for our strategic plan is academic success for every student. And some of this stuff may have started slightly prior to the implementation of last year's strategic plan, but we were forward-thinking at the time and it was consistent with kind of our goals and objectives. We implemented a new curriculum last year in math K to five. We're working on a new curriculum next year for reading. We adopted a real focus on the science of reading across the district. As, as some of you know, we talked about two weeks ago, our future ready committee has been implemented. We've made a sizable investment in technology. We're working hard in Houseville one ninety-eight. We've created a plan to implement Black history across content areas and across grade levels. We talked a couple of weeks ago about our partnership with High Roads, which is a strong movement towards inclusive education. DTGSS, if you're not familiar with that, that is our new teacher evaluation system. We were one of the first districts to get on the ground with that. And that aligned really consistently with our culture of coaching that we adopted last year. Working hard on our target support through NTSS to really make up the ground that we lost during the pandemic. If you're not familiar with our student learning template, that was another holdover from the pandemic. That was something that we developed to sort of connect with the, connect with our parents at home and give our students a, kind of a, an anchor that they can refer to, to really promote twenty-four seven learning through our one-to-one program. You'll, you'll see some of these on several of the slides because a lot of them. Um through our one to one program, you'll you'll see some of these on several of the slides because a lot of there's some crossover in our different priority areas. Uh we talked a little bit about the distance learning pilots at the high school we've been working on both in the world language department and in advanced placement. Um and our target professional development has been another emphasis that goes right along with our focus on in improving classroom instruction this year. Uh we'll talk a little bit about our strategic planning report card here later on and then our tutoring and summer programs have been a big success, the Spartan Summer Success Academy that we've run the last couple of years. Um so those were just some of the. Kind of initiatives that we've taken over the last eighteen months or so that we feel like it really helped us in our priority area one. Priority area two are partnerships with families, communities and businesses. The big thing is our return to a hundred percent face to face activities. All of our schools have been really aggressive in maximizing their school based events. Uh we're really kind of businesses get business getting back to as usual as much as possible. Um our uh parent advisory council, they're in our third year, um we've had pretty good participation there. Uh we've started a new partnership with the hub, the um rotary. Uh trying to foster those partnerships with businesses, local businesses, our communication through multiple platforms, as you know, we. Um uh adopted A P G a couple of years ago, um we just put out our new uh first evolution of the uh. Lake Forest School District um podcast, hopefully you guys listened to that. Uh if you haven't, we'll send it back out for you. Uh student learn and have learning term plate is another way that we partner with our families. Uh communicate with our families, Special Olympics, everybody knows that's a a big uh deal in the district, we've really advanced. Our partnership with Special Olympics and we've got some big events planned for the future this year. Uh the school finance committee that we've talked about already tonight and there's our strategic plan report card, I'll just show you here a little bit. And then priority area three, facilities, climate, culture and also technology. Um we did, uh we had Carl, uh Mr. Star in here two weeks ago. Uh reviewed those major investments that we've made in our facilities. Uh again, you'll see the school finance committee, Houseville one ninety eight, our technology upgrades that we've made again, another sizable investment. School council initiatives, we're still working hard on that. Um and a few other things in our area of climate and culture. Now I'm going to give our co chairs a chance. To talk a little bit more in depth about the three priority areas, so we turn over to Mr. D, who is uh him and Ms. Philly Allison back. And they're going to talk about priority area one, um our efforts for academic success for every student. Uh go ahead, Dave.
All right, so underneath here we can see the the three main areas, all students possess very literacy and mathematical skills. Continuously track the data to make sure that we're able to find um. Points of success that we can replicate and also find points of challenge where we can pin down your group calls analysis with the data that we're collecting. And uh and face the challenges head on and provide students and staff with continuous technological support. So for the strategic plan itself, if you go back into it, um how we measure and how the state measures us, so you go to the Delaware report card. Mostly it's with state testing court score, right? Smarter balances taking grades three to eight, S A T. Day is in grade eleven, I kind of always call that autopsy data, right? You get it at the end, but there's nothing you could do with it, it's over, right? So while we'll report that out and we'll we'll show a slide of of the trends over the last couple of years and the to be determined for the end of this year. We also track data on a constant basis uh throughout the school year. So we can make any changes that need to be had, get kids interventions before we get to these final final tests that the kids take, so. What I'm going to show you tonight is some overarching data, we'd be here all night if I broke it down to the granular level. Of each school, each grade level, each teacher, what's going on, but just know as you look at this like what I would call a thirty thousand foot overview. Internally, and I think Dr. Lucas is going to show later, like a template that we use to get down to very granular levels to be able to do root cause analysis. On what's going on within each school, within each grade level, so on and so forth. So the first thing we look at the. From an overall standpoint are grade distributions and now this is through the first marketing period, second marketing period just to answer next report, we'll have that updated, so. What you're seeing is K to five, these are core content areas, your math, E L A, science and social studies, uh not all the electives. Um so you can see the distributions up there in our K to five schools, that is the percentage when we look at report cards. Fifty seven percent of all grades are A's. So on and so forth going down, and then you can also see underneath that in our six to twelve schools, grade distribution, what it looks like, for example, thirty three percent of all grades are A's. At the secondary level, and you can see as it goes through the B Cs, E's and the S. Uh we also track number of students failing two or more classes. This is, and I'll show you some some other data that we track in a second, but we we want to use multiple data points to triangulate what you're doing. So these are the kids that we'll track and try to get interventions in as quickly as possible, right? We're halfway through a school year, we're not going to wait any longer. A lot of these kids, the secondary level are already in credit recovery. Uh trying to get some of these credits back in a K to five, everybody's running after school tutoring, pulling these kids in, trying to be proactive and getting these kids caught up. Or they even fall further and further behind. So once again, that's through the first marketing period. All right, so we do use what's called star testing, I don't know if everybody's familiar with it, um. By law, we have to administer it as a screener at least ten times a year. Okay, so the the kids will take it normally within the first month, most of them take it within the first week or two, they come in. Thirty day window to get it done, the second window just closed, we call that the winter testing and then there'll be the spring testing. What we do is we use that data, it populates into a data platform system, we call eye tracker, it will show the kids. Test scores, it will show their grades, it will show their attendance, it will show their discipline. We meet with and it's about on an every eight, nine week cycle, every school has what are called I S T teams, instructional support teams, they'll come in. And all right, it'll sort these kids out, these are the kids we need to talk about. Through the opportunity funding, um in others, we we brought these interventionists in, we have the reading specialists within the building. Without going into super detail on the how the process works, these kids are assigned to interventionists. And once again, hoping that that we bring these kids along, so from the. Fall star window, the winter star window. This is what we're showing growth in proficiency in K to five E L A, we went up in proficiency by fifteen percentage points in E L A. These are kids what we call in the green, right? Don't need any extra interventions, keep going with regular classroom instruction, good to go. Six to twelve E L A, we increased one percentage point. K to five math, we increased thirteen percentage points in proficiency and in six to twelve math. We increased four percentage points. Now if you go to the next slide, just to give it some context though. So what you're looking at here. Is an example coming out of one of our schools, one of our grade levels. So the proficiency doesn't always tell the story, so of what's going on, so when you look at the math example there. At the beginning of the year, fifty two point nine percent of our kids are coming up green, what we call tier one kids. Now in the winter, in this last one, you see the bump up to seventy one point two. But what also that doesn't count is if you take a look at that top of that red tip top of that triangle, we started at thirty. Point eight percent kids that our assessment is ringing aloud, intervene now, intervene now. Right, so you look over to that fourteen point four percent on the top. That's dropped drastically, so one would argue what's happening is the reds are becoming yellows, which aren't proficient yet, and what was yellow is now pushing into green. If that makes sense, so that doesn't necessarily get captured in proficiency rankings, even though the progress is being made. Uh as these kids move through, same thing for E L A, if it's E L A. So here is what it looks like state testing proficiency as we track through the years, you can definitely see where COVID and the pandemic. Uh did its number. Uh in two thousand and nineteen, grades three to five, uh third grade is when they first receive smarter balance testing. Uh you can see the sixty three percent proficiency rate, grade six to eight smarter balance and then grade eleven is S A T. And you can see the numbers going across there, then of course the two thousand twenty three, which is to be determined. Uh you can also see it with the math. Going across, uh one of the research firms we work with and we worked with through the pandemic to help us kind of navigate everything. One of the first things I remember talking to him, they said your math is going to get hit a lot harder than your E L A in this. Uh they're more discrete skills. These kids aren't giving these discrete skills, get ready for get ready for a drop. But it should also start to recover much quicker once the kids are back in instruction, um so some of those start wars coming in. We're we're hoping. That that is indicative of us seeing a rebound here in that two thousand twenty three column. So that's it for priority area one, any questions?
Questions for Mr. Dick?
Okay, uh good evening, everyone, I have priority area two. What we're focusing on in this particular area is our partnerships with families, communities and businesses, so my portion of this presentation in priority area two in general. Is a much more qualitative approach, taking a look at what's going on in our school district. But focus is mainly on the connections that we're making with our community uh in the two way reciprocation of supports that our school stakeholders are interested in uh. Obtained, so our first strategy within this priority area is to increase the meaningful and equitable engagement opportunities and address the interest, strengths and needs of all stakeholders. So this uh generally is are the types of events that we have that connect with our community. Uh that are associated with student skills, student interests, um gauging the community and their interests and I think some of the things that you. Uh saw take place during the fall uh in early winter months uh starting the school year. Um homecoming parade and events, this is something that permeates across all of our schools. Uh we do uh really kind of uh back the high school in the sense of uh the those events that take place during. Uh the homecoming week, uh and then obviously with our parade uh and associated events uh in concluding with our with our football game. Uh at all of our schools also uh participate in Veterans Day programs, there's a variety of programs. Uh that occur uh at each school, uh some schools uh will take uh students and decorate um. Veteran graves with with Reese uh in honor of their service to our country, uh other schools hold actual recognition events. Uh it is something uh that originally started at North Elementary School many, many, many years ago and has grown. Uh and and to events uh across all uh six, all seven of our schools actually, including the Delaware Early Childhood Center. Uh we also have partnered with Special Olympics, specifically their bachi ball tournament, so. Uh soccer uh skills was the primary uh sporting event in the past. Uh Special Olympics shifted that focus to bachi ball because it's a much more inclusive sport. Um and we uh those of you that were able to attend that, we had a wonderful event out here at the high school. Uh that was coordinated by Heather Hitchens and her support staff uh there at uh Central Elementary School. Where we had all uh we had student athletes from all of our schools participate in this event. Uh it was really a great opportunity to connect uh to those students uh and actually having some of our secondary students come out and service. Um serve as uh partner athletes um and supporting our students with special needs. Uh in all of our schools participate in Delaware fire safety activities, uh just a couple of weeks ago, we were here and and heard about all the great awards that students across the district have received in this competition. Uh so it is definitely a Lake Forest community staple uh to be involved in uh the the state fire safety activities. Uh now, of course, you know, we don't have space for all of the great things that are happening in our school districts. You know, we also are connected with our National Honor Society, uh we ran a lot of um. Uh Honor Society events where those uh that are in Honor Society actually volunteer and working in the community required to get uh community hours. Um you know, we have the fall ball at East, uh we have the tournament of the bands uh that was held right here at the high school. Uh we also have all of our performing arts uh groups uh doing drama and theater presentations or holiday concerts. Uh so a lot of other activities uh that are connecting us uh to our community through interests um are taking place and it's reflected on this first slide. As we move into the second area, which is uh promoting that community to build caring, positive and respectful mutual relationships. This is about those true partnerships that we're trying to uh create with uh uh community organizations. Uh so you can see here um that all of our schools and the district um have actually engaged with our community uh through annual meet and greet, open house events. Uh Dr. Lucas also mentioned the parent advisory council that has been up and running. Um we also uh have a very large partnership with our Lake Forest Community Education Foundation, who uh provides large amounts of grants to our uh teachers uh here in the school district. Um each one of our schools uh holds a a version of a parent teacher organization. Uh that most certainly looks much different from between elementary and secondary schools, uh but there are attempts there to try to connect uh parents. Um in in connecting them with the teachers and and how uh that group can support our schools across the district. We also have uh partnerships with the Lions Club and our Rotary Clubs, the Blood Bank of Delaware uh runs a uh blood drive over at our high school. And this year, uh we actually had a Lake Forest night uh with uh Delaware Thunder, uh which is the local um. Minor League Ice Hockey Team uh he right here in Harrington. Um we also have organizations like our E cap policy uh council, our strategic planning committee connected uh with several organizations and um community members. Uh we have our our regular school finance oversight committee meetings, uh and then just some of the fun things that have happened like haunted hallways at at Lake Forest High School. Um Lake Forest High School also received a grant from Preston Automotive, uh so you know, uh making connections uh with our our businesses is is definitely something that's uh continued to to grow. As we move through this current school year. And the final strategy within this priority area is the work based learning and career exploration opportunities. Uh this is something that is very new here in Lake Forest School District. Um we've reestablished this program and it has seen some success as we uh nearly doubled the number of students that have are truly enrolled in an official. W B L or work based learning program. And these programs are actually connected to our pathways as well, uh because these pathways are normally result in um. Student organization uh connections such as uh B P A, F F A, um our um F C C L A group. Uh and what used to be known as H A S A, which is now our Future Health Professionals, and I know that there are other organizations that aren't listed up here. That are connected to those pathways, but that is pretty exciting to see as we grow and now currently have nine pathways uh at the high school for students students uh to engage in. Um and then our uh work based learning students are employed in several different community businesses such as Taylor Mestic, Southern States, Chick-fil-A, both Camden and Milford. Uh so of course, students um as part of their um uh part of their experience, uh leave school uh during the day and you take that opportunity to go and gain. Work experience uh in the community. Um our high school has partnered up with elementary schools, uh where high school students go and support and tutor uh elementary students, that partnership is primarily right now between the high school and central, just because of proximity. But those partnerships are growing and there are conversations with many of our other elementary schools and how we can engage um our high school students um from across the parking lot. Uh we also had uh B P A students visit Biilers and Vanderwins and Grottoes. Uh F F A held an event, a farm to table event that was uh successfully attended as well. Uh and so these are some examples of the great dinner work based learning programs here in the Lake Forest School District. Any questions on priority priority area two? Okay, thank you.
All right, this brings me up to priority area three, Miss Almond and I uh representing an update. Uh we are school facilities, climate and culture, we're going to start with uh school facilities. This table is reflective of the updates that Mr. Star gave at our last board meeting. Um including roofing, uh replacement, the uh the window updates, H B A C, um including information about the bidding. The uh scheduling update as well as the impact of the shortages uh to these projects, so I'm not going to go, we just add that information and. He provides updates fairly regularly, so we're not going to go too far into into those details unless you guys have some questions. Our next one uh includes technology along with the the facilities piece, we have three projects that uh. Uh come around with our the technology infrastructure, the first one is continuously maintaining and updating the technology system, so that's looking at. The rollout of Chromebooks at the high school, um which would make the district completely one to one with Chromebooks moving forward. As well as an upgraded server um maintenance coming up this summer for the six outdated servers and then moving toward uh digital phone systems. The second project there within technology infrastructure is a five year replacement cycle and this is work that has been going on with the uh future ready committee. Uh working on um kind of what do we what do we need down the road for five years, five years down the road to sustain. Uh our level of technology, the wiring uh is a great example there, the uh to sustain the bandwidth that we may need there. And then our third one is to increase social media presence and update our website information. Um which this past year we adopted Thrill Share, which is our current website platform and messaging system. Uh so to continue that work, we continue to further integrate that within our schools and within our messaging. So that was school facilities. Now climate and culture uh. Includes uh attendance data, so the state. Tracks chronically absent um attendance data, so that long definition there is what the state defines as chronically absent. Really what it is is ten, missing ten percent of school uh throughout the year, so we factored that down during the first marketing period to be essentially, if you were absent for four days or more. Within that timeframe, you were considered considered chronically absent, so if you think about that, if you had the flu. Or if you had the stomach bug bug in your house, you fall into this this area very quickly, uh and you can see the percentages for K five there. Uh the percentage of chronically absent, almost twenty five percent, and then for the secondary thirty three point six percent, so essentially. Flu, COVID, stomach bug, you're on this list, uh we did go a step further kind of factor. We did go a step further, kind of factor out, if we have those instances where they're excused absences are recognized or okay, we provide makeup work opportunities. If we factor out just the unexcused absence, is that number come down considerably? So looking at students that are actually. Unexcused absence, not, you know, not necessarily sick, you can see our numbers come down to 5.9% and then 12.9%. And then we factor that number throughout the year to essentially equate to 10% of that. The total school enrollment for the end of the year. And again, this is a metric that the state uses and tracks for each school district. Along with attendance, we also look at within our strategic plan and priority or three, we look at our choice. In and out of the district. Very interesting graphic here. We have the first column are all the districts that are involved with choice with us. The second column is those number we're choosing in from the district. So looking at the first one, Caesar Rodney, we have sixty-seven Caesar Rodney students that are choosing into Lake. And then on down through Capital Christina, all the way down through Poly, which is, you know, choice with Poly Tech is not necessarily straight choice. It's, you know, a little bit different there. We don't necessarily have kids coming into us from there. The next column in the red are kind of the negative, the outgoing folks. So looking at Caesar Rodney, again, at the top, we have twenty-three students that are choosing out to Caesar Rodney. And then the the total is kind of the net, the net wins or losses there on the out, the the outskirts there on the right. With a total number of seventeen net kind of coming into us as opposed to going out, you know, across across the board there. Not captured in this is also, we have seventy-three choice students that choice within our school district. So okay, this is fairly common in K three. So if they have a parent that works at North, but they are at East, East Attentancy, which is actually my situation. Then those students are choosing within within the school district and that's not necessarily factored into this chart because it's not a net, net winner, net loss. But those are numbers that we look at as well to determine where we, you know, where we are. And as you improve choice and improvement that I choice applications throughout the the board process. You can, you know, you know that this number always is constantly going up and down based on the applications that we get throughout the year. And then finally, looking at attendance or not attendance, referral data, this one data. So I want you to think back to to Mr. Dick's presentation where he showed those triangles. We look at this one data in the same exact way in that triangle aspect. So typically at the end of a school year, an ideal triangle would have eighty percent green. So in this case, eighty percent of our students with zero to one referrals. In our yellow, about fifteen percent of students and then in our red, five percent of the students. So that's a end of the year kind of goal. If you're within those ranges, then you've been fairly successful. These are numbers that only go up typically as we go through the school year. So you can see our K five data there. Ninety-eight point five percent, that green part of the triangle, are are students that have one or less referrals. At this point of the school year, the yellow, one point four percent. And then you can see those those frequent flyers, there's ones, you know, those, those, those guys having trouble to need additional support within our behavior and TSS process. At zero point one. And again, these are numbers that go up as the year goes on. But as long as they fall within that eighty, fifteen and five, then, you know, then we have essentially a balanced triangle. Within the intervention that we use to support those students. And then the secondary, same, same kind of setup, ninety-six point three for zero to one, three point two, two to five. And then again, that is zero point one. Actually, I think that's a typo. I can, let me look at the, I had to look at that percentage. I think that was just carried over. That's seventy-one, seventy-one total referral or seventy-one. Yes, seventy-one total referrals for seven students. So actually that percentage may actually be zero point one for that, for that final. Column there. So and again, eighty, fifteen, five is our end of the year goal. We are well, well. Below that. And this is data that was for the first market here. We kind of peeked ahead at some of our data coming into, coming out of the second market period. And we're still considerably low. I think the highest red percentage is like a two percent. Whereas, you know, obviously, the the point one is, is, you know, we would love to keep that. But again, it's a number that continues to rise. And then as we go through further updates, we'll continue to provide updates for. Attendance school choice, discipline, facilities. And then our big report out for this this priority area is our climate survey data, which is done toward the end of the year. So that would be information that is collected for parents, staff and students about the the essential climate of our schools, which would include. Security, safety, bullying, anything that goes into just the overall feeling of 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 the climate of the school in those different, three different areas. And that's kind of our big report out as we get that data toward the end of the year. So that's all we, that's all we have. Any questions?
All right. Thanks to you guys for all that great work. I did want to just show you one thing that we're working on right now is two documents. One's an outward facing document that we hope to have on our district website. That basically people can one-stop shop for all our district data are up to date, strategic planning data. Travis, can you go back and see if you can click on one of our priority areas there? Is it functional? So the plan is, for example, priority area. One is, and this is all going to be functional once we get all the data collected. It may not be functional because of the way that we've gotten embedded in the the presentation. But each of those priority areas will have, there we are. As you see there, and then we'll be able to click on any of those and see those kind of in real time. So that's what we're looking to. Develop and have on our websites or stakeholders can look and go, okay, how are we doing? How are we doing this? And how are we doing? And then Mr. D mentioned our internal facing document, which is the next one. And this one is is pretty functional, but this is more of our our documents so we can track our formative data. And as you can see, we've got all this. We're not going to click on any of those because we don't want to kind of. Put anybody on blast here right now, but. That's a lot of our internal data that they can, teachers and and administrators can refer real time. And this is where Mr. G talked about that, that that broken down data that you really get down to the degree. He used the term granule and and see where, you know, where we can use that targeted. Interventions to improve all of our our areas. The really encouraging thing about is the way that people embrace the strategic plan and really taken seriously the efforts to improve. In these areas that we really think matter. Okay, we've got another page. All right. So what's next is we're going to continue to develop those inward and outward facing documents. And get the outward facing document on our website and our whole group strategic planning committee will meet in August after we've got all our data. And we're able to really assess how we year one and make recommendations for the next year. For school for, that's all I have. Open source, any questions or discussion? Questions or discussion, Dr. Lucas is starting.
I have a question, but just a, like, I think that was fantastic. I love it. We have a website. It's just very transparent. Anybody has access to that. So good job to everybody who's doing that. It's the first time we've gotten like this, the.
I would agree.
Yeah, that's wonderful. Thank you.
The internal document, who's the audience for that? Is that just just district level? Is that?
Yes, yes, school level, district level. Principals can access that data and share it with their teams. Really, they can even get down to this, to the student level and really find out. At our, if you go into our schools right now, what you would see is some really graphic visual data. By teacher, by class, numbers of students who are, you know, excelling at high levels, students who need help. So, yes, it's all across the district. Form of the data that they can use to help guide instruction.
So directly accessing the administration, but they can parse it out to provide to teaching staff.
Yes, sir.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. Any other questions or Mr. McCloskey?
Yeah, I do just want to mention, like, I, I hope that the community can really. Get the word out about this because it is really nice to be able to have that information at the beginning to be able to say, you know. Oh, I, this place has so many referrals or this or that. Pull it up and be like, oh, we really don't have. This, we, I think sometimes the perception or the way things travel, they can seem like things are a lot worse sometimes than than maybe they are. And to be able to have the community feel vested, to be able to look in that quickly is, I think, the best I've seen. Do it this time, so.
Thanks. All right. See, nothing else. Thank you all for those involved. Keep up the great work. We're on to section four, discussion items, point one, school financing, reading referendum. Dr. Lucas.
Thank you again. And we are here to revisit the school finance committee discussion that we had two weeks ago. The purpose tonight is to update the board about the work of the committee and suggest, propose. The board vote on moving forward on a referendum election. Just a quick review of some definitions. Four of which we talked about last week and one that is new. Assess value and Mr. Calvin's going to refer to this during his portion of the discussion. Very important that we understand the assessed value of our property differs from the market value of our property in the community. We have found that the assessed value is somewhere around one-fifth or one-sixth of the actual market value. So if you own a house that market value on it is $300,000, it's typically going to be assessed at one fifty or $60,000. For the assessed value. We talked last time about a referendum that is simply a vote that on a specific community proposal, law or political issue. Operating funds are what we're really talking about here. These are our funds that we use to do business, day-to-day operations. The other term that you might hear discussed is a capital referendum. And that relates to like a major capital project. If we were to need to build a new school or we need to. Finance, we would need a great, great sum of funds to build something or fix something, that would be a capital referendum. We're talking about this presentation with regards to operating funds. And then we talked a lot two weeks ago about the district reserve. And that's essentially our emergency fund. That's what we have in the, in the event of a catastrophic need. We have to have funds to cover future obligations in the event that we somehow lose cash flow. And I believe the district reserve, healthy district reserves about 2.5% of the total operating budget. Is that what we?
Five percent.
Five percent, five percent. Thank you, Mr. Calvin. All right. So why are we, why have we initiated this look at long-term finances? Is our district has essentially been functioning on the same operating revenue for the past eight school years. And done an excellent job at being able to balance the budget and and maintain that strategic reserve. Unfortunately, we know operating costs have escalated and we are going to need additional revenue if we want to continue to maintain a balanced budget. Four main areas that are really affected by these increasing costs are obviously staff recruitment and retention, school safety and security, transportation and technology. But turn it over, Mr. Calvin. He's going to talk to us a little bit about the business end and catch us up from what we talked about a couple of weeks ago.
And just to follow up on that, that district reserve comment, you know, districts all across the state carry varying levels of district reserve. You're going to have one into the spectrum to the other. I think probably at the high end of the spectrum, you might have some of these VOTEC schools that have a district reserve that's, you know, maybe at twenty-five percent versus a five percent. You know, but. It's just dependent. And like he said, it's it's for future obligations, those those contracts that we still have to pay out that. That vacation and sick pay that we still have to pay out when people retire and things like that. So. Again, these are financial reference numbers that we like to use as as anchoring points, you know. A penny of our current expense tax equates to an additional fifty-five thousand in district tax receipts. And so as you look down towards the bottom, a one point eight percent or one point eight cent tax increase. Would equate to almost a hundred thousand dollars in cost increase. So if we're to increase the current expense tax rate by eighteen cents. That would raise an additional one million dollars a year. As a reference point. One of the things we also talked about was, I believe at the last meeting. The average assessment and what would that look like? So with the school tax being a dollar sixty-one. Per hundred dollars of assessed value. The average assessment in the district is at roughly thirty-three thousand dollars, thirty-three thousand eight hundred, somewhere in that range. And so the school tax for that would be roughly five hundred and forty-six dollars. And I just wanted to point out too that that's just the school tax for the residents of Lake Forest. There's also a VOTEC school tax that everybody pays. There's other taxes involved with your, your total tax bill. That, that five forty-six though would make up roughly about seventy-five percent of your total tax bill. So. And then, and so when we look at, there's the average assessed value in the district, thirty-three thousand eight seventy-eight. So this is a chance to look at. The, the math for this particular equation, you know, the rate being a dollar sixty-one. For a hundred dollars of assessed value with an average assessed value in the district at thirty-two thousand eight, that means the total. Tax bill for that individual would be five hundred and forty-six dollars per year. And so here's a chance to see the different levels. Using our current expense tax rate. With the current rate, there's that five forty-six that we talked about for the average assessment. If we were to raise it one penny, there's that three dollars and thirty-eight cents that we would get on an annual basis. If we were to raise it twenty-five cents, we would get an additional eighty-four dollars per year on that average assessed value. And then all the way down to thirty-seven cents of a hundred and twenty-five dollars annually or ten dollars a month. For the average assessment. The other thing I'll point out, when we were talking about the discussion on assessments, I'd kind of looked, taken a look and and done some sampling across the district of. Of different properties and and it will range anywhere from a fifth of the market value all the way up to maybe an eighth of the market value. So it could go to to even further extremes. So also as a reference point, our last current spending operating referendum. It was an increase of twenty-five cents and that's what got us to the point nine five oh eight, ninety-five cents, ninety-five point zero eight cents. So that same percentage increase, when you look at twenty-five cents increasing to ninety-five, from, you know, seven, zero, zero, eight up to nine, five, oh, eight. Roughly in the vicinity of thirty-five percent. So that equivalent increase in today's terms, based on a point nine five oh eight, would probably put us at that thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven cent. Increase. And so that's what you see up there right now. Any questions about that particular? Okay. And again, with the property tax reassessment, that's on a lot of people's minds. You know, their, their goal is to try to get that out by June twenty twenty-four. I did send an email to a counterpart that I, I have contact with at Kent County. Office and just to discuss this exact presentation here that you see in that graph. Just to confirm that my expectations are indeed what's going to happen and it may reassure me that, yes. Basically, it's going to be a revenue neutral, not just for the county, but it's also supposed to be revenue neutral for the district as well. So in this instance, if we did have a tax rate of one dollar per hundred dollars of assessed value with five hundred thousand and five hundred million in total assessments. That taxes collected of five millions not going to change after the reassessment. It's just they're going to readjust that tax rate. So consequently, if we change the current expense tax rate through a referendum vote in May. Come, when it comes time to do the reassessment, if we said, agreed that, you know, the increase was going to be thirty-seven cents. And now all of a sudden, they've degraded the tax rate for the whole county by, you know. A quarter or something like that. So it's, you know, twenty-five percent of what it used to be, then they would reduce that thirty-seven cent increase by the same commensurate rate. So. So in the end, we're still going to collect the same amount of taxes and even though we, you know, already voted for that tax increase, it's just going to re-baseline itself.
So question with that. So the term to use there is should, right? It should be neutral. That's what they're intending, right? Have they given any guarantees that when they, when it all comes out in the wash? If the reassessment, we are getting somehow less as a district, has there been anything said about? Us at least getting what we had gotten before.
No, because I think that they would basically take that tax rate. So for instance, currently, like, nothing ever happened with a referendum, that ninety-five cents, ninety-five oh eight. They would just make sure if we collected five million this year, they would change that tax rate. And change it against the reassessment just to make sure that it equates to the same five million dollars again.
Yeah, I mean, it's. Yeah, I'd be interested to see how that plays out. I mean, I, I never thought about that until just now, listening to this. And and wondering if there is any potential risk there.
And I think that's why it was originally put in Delaware code about that, that leeway to. Increase it up to ten percent at the district level in the event of a reassessment. To, you know, maybe address issues like that, but there's currently some legislation out there to get rid of that. Authorization to increase up to ten percent after the reassessment. So.
Okay, thank you.
okay, thank you. And then I'll turn it back over to Dr. Lucas for the rest of this.
Thank you. Any uh further questions? Thanks, Kurt. So just uh just final reiteration. Uh if we were not to seek this revenue increase at this time, that could restrict our our uh abilities for staff compensation, uh our our safety and security uh investments, uh our technology schedule um and our transportation. Essentially, to summarize, uh our revenues have been essentially flat for eight years. Um we're increasing costs and personnel, transportation, materials. Have, we have to, we have to match that uh in order to keep our budget balanced uh moving forward for the future. Uh so uh I represent the committee's recommendation, the board vote tonight to approve to proceed with an operating referendum campaign with a potential election date of May sixth, two thousand twenty three. And I will open the floor for any questions, discussion um with regards to the work that we've done with the committee um and any of the folks in the room here that were part of that process.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Lucas, uh and her questions, discussion on this topic, this presentation and the vote that will be for us later in the evening. This is start.
What's like, so we're looking at less than three months. I mean, is that, do we feel that that's a substantial amount of time to really work out and advertise this and get people on work? I mean, I think it is, but I mean.
So to that point, could we maybe talk about what happens next? What what does our timeline look like? Because I'm sure there's um an application to the state, right? So could we talk about that in conjunction with Stark's question?
Yes. So anticipation of a potential vote, we've already been in contact with the election commission and alerted them to the fact that we are seeking board approval for a referendum in the spring. Um they've uh given us the the parameters we're we're buying in terms of them being able to uh to run the election in May. So no issues there. Um I have talked to our council. Uh my first phone call will be to him in the morning, based to given the outcomes of this election. Basically, our only kind of deadline is that forty days prior to May sixth, we must submit the actual language of the vote to the election commission. So we do have plenty of time. We've got about, I think that's about forty days or so from now. Um so we've got between now and then to determine exactly what the language is uh going to be on our election. That's going to be the the only deadline. In terms of um the campaign, uh I think we have plenty of time. I think that I've got some people on the committee that are willing to to work and uh, you know, uh effectively get the word out. Uh we've got a couple of months to get out on the road and do some presentations at our schools. Um make contact with some of our uh community partners out there um and 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 pass the word that uh we've got both yes in this uh this initiative. So that answers your question.
That answered my question. Yes, and starting to answer your question, Mr. McCloskey.
Um I just want to say, like, I piggybacking off of that question, I think we did a very good job with the finance, may getting people sending our letters. Like, I think that that was a big ample time to be able to respond, be able to come, to be able to make arrangements. So I think um that was a big good, the right start for it all. So I will say that I'm very happy that that happened. I felt like we were getting feedback and questions, get everything answered. And that's why I think at this point we have gone over all of this. So most of I don't I don't have any lingering questions at this point, because I think we saw a lot of preparation.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no further discussion, so let's talk. Back up for vote. Thank you again for everybody that's been involved in the committee uh both uh within the district staff and our community and families that have gotten us to this point. Now we're on to section five, unfinished business, five point one, second readings is in action. I don't miss a start.
I'll make a motion. We approve the second reading of these policies as modified during.
Second. The motion will floor properly seconded. Questions or discussion on that motion? We will do as we traditionally do and run through the, again, these are second readings. Uh the board did review these four to six weeks ago. So we're looking at them for the second time. We'll start off with EBV accident prevention and safety procedures. Any discussion on EBV? See none move on to ECC. Buildings and grounds records and reports, any discussion on this policy? We move on, see none, move on to ECF, energy conservation and discussion on this policy. See no move on to ED, uh materials and equipment management. Discussion on this policy. See none move on to EAC, bus scheduling and routing, discussion on EAC. See no move on to IJJ textbook selection and adoption, discussion on this policy. See man, move on to IKD, honor rolls, discussion on IKD. See none, move to JLD. Guidance and counseling. Discussion on this policy. See no move on to KHA, public solicitation in schools. Discussion on KHA. Seeing on last link, want to KHB, advertising in schools. Discussion on KHB. Mrs. Stark.
I'm just curious about um the bullets and the numbers. I don't know. I mean, they kind of mean the same thing. So I don't know. I think they're just, you guys think that can be three one?
Yeah, typically if we do, we have less than five.
Okay.
We do bullets and if we have more than that, we do numbers.
Even on the same document, yeah.
Yeah, I remember basing it on the same document.
Yeah, I that's what you actually have seen it on the opposite, but I don't know. I don't know that it would look cleaner or just something like that. It doesn't really matter.
Yeah, we're correct. We can do numbers. I think you're right. We could look better with all numbers, but that would kind of contradict what we do.
I know.
Um any further discussion or in our second meetings? We see none. We do have any motion on the floor. We'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the extensions, motion carries four to zero. Uh we are on to section eight personnel. This is.
Yeah, section eight, um make a motion. We approve eight point one to eight point four as written.
Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? See no move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions, motion carries four to zero.
Section eleven personnel transfers, make a motion. We approve eleven or numbers eleven point one or eleven point two as written.
Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? See none move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Any extensions, motion carries four to zero.
Section thirteen personnel officers employment and make a motion. We approve resolution thirteen point one to thirteen point six as.
Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The extensions, motion carries four to zero.
Section fifteen personnel leaves of absence. I make the motion, we approve resolution fifteen point one to fifteen point six as written.
Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? See none to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The extensions, motion carries four to zero.
Section twenty one point one school choice could make a motion. We approve the resolution as written. Second.
Emotionally floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? See none move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The extensions, motion carries four to zero.
Resolution twenty one point two, be it resolved, the Lake Forest Board of Education approves the order for a referendum election to increase current expense tax limits to increase operating revenue. Second.
Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Uh so I would just like to say that I'm going to speak in favor of this motion. Um I think our school district uh during, you know, at least during my tenure on the board since two thousand fifteen, I think we've done a phenomenal job of being uh very fiscally responsible. Um and you can see that in a lot of what we do um in in terms of our trend lines. Um I think we have been tremendously transparent. It's been a big priority of mine personally is that we were transparent in everything that we did from a school operation standpoint, specifically when it came to funding and expenses. Um and we are definitely at the time that this is very much needed. Um if for no other reason, um it is very much needed for our staff and for what we need to do to remain competitive, not only in education, but just as an employer overall. The landscape has changed dramatically over the last few years, um and this is very much needed. So I could not be uh more in favor of uh what we uh need to do here. Any other discussion or questions on the motion? Uh see none to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extension, motion carries four to zero. Oh, that's it. Thank you. This is our B, Mr. McCloskey. Uh we are on to section twenty five, board reports and discussion items. Start off with twenty five point one, Delaware School Board Association. This is Stark.
Yeah, we have not met since our last meeting, we meet in March.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Stark? All right, thank you. Uh twenty five point two legislative committee. Uh Mr. Rao is not here.
I did attend on the last meeting, was last Wednesday evening uh on his behalf. And what they did was present to the committee proposed legislation uh and the discussions that ensued about each one and they'll continue to discuss those at the next meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for attending. Any questions for Dr. Wyatt? All right. Thank you again, Dr. Wyatt. And twenty five point three, but in the order, opportunity for board members to address any topics not covered elsewhere in the agenda. The floor is open. All right. Seeing nothing, I do not believe we have a need for executive session. Dr. Lucas, Jr., Travis, any board member? Uh with that said, entertain a motion for a emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? I will say our next meeting is two weeks from tonight, Thursday, February twenty third.
Yes.
We will be taking our first road trip of the year. Thank you, Ms. Piccolo. Uh we will be at East Elementary uh for Thursday, February twenty third, starting at seven PM. Look to see you all there. Um all those in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
We oppose the extensions, motion carries four to zero. The board is adjourned eight point six PM. Thank you all again very much. Stay safe.